Okay, at this time we have called us meeting of the Walker County School Nutrition Session for our Budget Work Session. We are all here, Mr. Carruth is here by Google Meeting and we appreciate him taking the time to do that when he was on vacation, so thank you, Mr. Carruth. At this time, Mr. McNabb, would you please offer our invitation?
Sure.
Thank you.
Darren, Father, we want to thank you for your love. Father, as we gather tonight to manage the school systems business, we ask for your continued guidance to make the best decisions for our children and our community. Father, I pray that you continue to encourage us even when we feel discouraged. We know that everything is in your capable hands, that you sustain the great.
Thank you so much. All right, Mr. McNabb, we are ready to discuss.
All right, so we've got a combination meeting here going, we've got a live stream happening, and we've also got a hangout going with Mr. Carruth, and so we're glad that you guys are here, whether present or virtually. We're going to cover a lot of information, and so what I'm going to try to do is I'm going to hit some highlights, and then I'm going to pause and allow you guys to ask some questions, and Mr. Carruth can chime in at that point if he has a question, then we'll shift into something else and kind of follow that same format, if that's okay. But feel free to stop me at any time and ask me or Rachel questions, both of us are here and we're happy to answer those. I want to start off with the page entitled, and it just hit me, I don't know if Mr. Carruth is going to have these documents in front of him, so we probably could, Scott, Mike, I don't know if you have those from the email that we sent this past week or not?
I do, I do have those emails and the documents in front of me right now.
Okay, perfect, perfect. So we're going to, hold on, can you hear us okay, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So I'm going to start off with the one that says Budget Overview 7/7/2020. At the top you can see an FY 2020 highlight, an FY 2021 draft highlight, and then a decrease in bold print. That's where I want to kind of start. Go back to FY 2020, when we were here a year ago last year talking about the pending budget, and we were discussing the difference between our revenue and expenditure amounts, and we were getting further and further apart, and so the goal was to begin to reduce that amount. One of the things that you guys decided to do as a board, and we definitely appreciate that, decision that you guys made was to move the millage rate back to the 17,404, where it sat for a number of years. If you remember, we took the rollback amount three years in a row, ended up being about a million five. So over the period of three to four years, that ended up being three to four million dollars of lost revenue. And so you guys made that decision, your commitment was to do that. You asked us to commit to watching every expenditure, to looking at our FTE closely, and to maintain that budget, and begin to lower that gap, decrease that gap between revenue and expenditure. So I wanted to kind of start, because when you look at that FY 20, revenue was budgeted, this is again, this was based on a projection, okay? It was at $89,844,000, but our expenditure budget was at $94,602,000. So you can see that was a difference of $4.7 million. But as we're finalizing numbers right now, and we'll have that, we'll finalize the year, and you'll get that report October the first, where you'll actually see hard numbers from the budget perspective, and then what we actually had and spent. We're seeing that revenue number trending up right now, we feel comfortable conservatively that it's going to land somewhere between 90 and 91 million. So there's an additional amount of revenue. Part of that was the decision that you made, that additional $900,000 we felt like we would get, that's part of it. The other component I want you to know of is we received a midterm adjustment. So our MTE was trending upwards again last year. Luckily, the cut that we just took to 10% was based on that mid-year adjustment, not on what we started with. So we got the credit for that amount of money. So I think the combination of the two of those moved that revenue up quite a bit for us. The other thing I wanted you to remember is, of that $94,602,000, remember we talked about the historical savings we've had on expenditures, which has been somewhere between 3% and 5%, a high of 7, a low of 2. But keep in mind, when we were talking about last year's budget, we had already started looking closely and cutting some things last year. So we didn't feel like we were going to hit anything above that 3%. But if you'll go right down a little bit where it says 2020 budget, you can see expenditures less than budgeted, they came in at $2.2 million less. Now, what does that mean? Well, it means we watched every expenditure. It means that we were making sure that anything that came before us, if there was a council talking about, is that a want or is that a need, is it something we can fund through another source, how can we do this later, whatever that looked like. The other thing I think we need to remember is COVID hit in March. So some of those expenditures were halted by just not being in school, okay? But that was a $2.2 million decrease in those expenditures. So that 4.7 that we felt like we were going to use to balance the budget didn't end up being 4.7, it became a smaller number. So I wanted to kind of remind you of that, because if you notice that one line that says the 2020 budget would have decreased unassigned fund balance, and if you remember the first look y'all got, we were thinking it was going to be 6.4, it actually ended up being 5.9. But we thought it was going to go down to 1.1, which we knew we couldn't have that as an ending fund balance or a beginning fund balance this year. We're conservatively estimating right now that our unassigned ending fund balance is going to be somewhere around 4.2. 4.2, we're confident it's going to be there. We were talking this afternoon, we feel like it may, when we get to October 1st and final numbers, it may be a little higher than that as well. But we're comfortable with 4.2, so that's what we're going to kind of work with at this point, if that's okay. I'll stop there. Any questions at this point? Okay, I'm going to keep going. If you'll follow down that list, you can see the 2021 budget revenue budget. So Rachel has a number there which coincides with the number above, which would be the difference between expenditure and revenue, that 4.7. The millage increase, that $900,000, was not in last year's budget, because remember, we were voting on that, so it was going to impact this year, but we didn't have it built into the revenue. Thus the reason I think you're going to see that 89 go a little higher when it's finalized, but that's the $900,000. The next one is, when we received the preliminary tax digest, the millage rate's going to remain the same, but the assessed values went up. So they already told us, we can expect conservatively on the preliminary about $300,000 more in revenue next year. So that takes that $900,000 up to a million two, okay? So we went ahead and put that in there. However, I want you to know, it's not showing in our budget at this point. So keep that number in your mind as we get to some final numbers here. The 10% reduction, you guys remember, we were working on a 14% reduction, and Rachel came back and your first glance was, we can handle that cut up to $918,000, we were still that far off. Then we remembered, we had $900,000 in step increases for certificating folks, that moved that number from $900,000 to a million eight, just in the cut that we hadn't handled yet. So we were working pretty hard trying to figure out where that was going to come from when the governor came back and said, it's going to be 11%. Well, that definitely helped, and so we started readjusting it. Luckily, he came back, and I'm thankful that it was 10%. And so we received our allotment sheet just this past, or at the end of last week, to give us hard numbers. That's what that $5,124,101, that's our 10% reduction in our QBE funding. That's going to be lost in revenue for us this year. So you can see, when you put all that money together, that's an $8.6 million gap that we had to work toward in an effort to balance our budget. Keep going down the pages, you can see the options that we looked at and the amounts of those equals. Reduction to nutrition, that was $2.4 million. You remember, we had already committed to doing that last year, because we knew we had some positions that maybe we weren't completely funding. And the other thing, and Mr. McNabb had brought this up, and we went back and did the research, we had about 80 teachers that are getting, were getting no state funding for. So we started looking at, how can we reduce that number where we are getting full state funding from our folks and the TNE associated with it? So that's where the attrition started, but that was $2.4 million. The 10-day contract reduction or the calendar reduction days, those are about $300,000 a day, 10 days, that's $3 million. Project search, I want to highlight this one again, because we did Project Search Graduation last night, it was fantastic. But Project Search was on the board, because we had fewer interns coming in for next year, and we lost our home. CHI Memorial said, we're not sure if you're going to be able to come back. We knew this was the perfect transition year for us to say, let's hold on that, and then we'll put it back in place the following year if budget allows, and if Memorial allows us to come back. That was $120,000. Some small ones, the webmaster supplement's 22.5. We looked at our enlistment contract, you guys remember, we started at half, we ended up at about 25%, so that's the 114. We reduced our travel and dues, because we're not going anywhere, because they've reduced those to virtual meetings, so they're charging you registration, but the travel is eliminated, so we felt like we could do that safely. CARES Act funding, you can see the 1.469, and then our utilities that we moved, remember we talked about doing things that would be more appropriate in audit? So we moved the head custodians and utilities associated with that. That's about the 2.227 that we received, minus the equitable services that went out, which was $68,000. So then we've got a total there of $7,676,000. So if you take those two totals, it left us still with a gap of a million five, getting better, but it was still a pretty significant gap. Then you go back and look at the additional expenditures that we had to put in. And I probably will ask Rachel, we chime in a little bit on this, maybe even Miss Holloway, since they're both here. Certificated experience, I mentioned that, that was about $900,000, that's based on the state salary schedule, that's something you have to do. Unemployment, we've received notice that the unemployment claims that we've received so far, we're looking at $100,000 plus that's going to come from us. Now, I still think that's going to be something that we're going to pursue a legal help with that, because I don't think that needs to come back on us. It may be like a flow-through where we fund that upfront, and then that money comes back to us, but we had the budget for it. The potential transfer to school nutrition, you remember we talked about the expenses associated with feeding from March through July, basically, was about $580,000. But if we move that into CARES Act, and then USDA offered a grant to cover some of it, we wouldn't be able to get it into, because we've already paid for it. So we decided to hold on that and make that an expenditure that potentially comes out of our budget, just to see what happens. So that one may be, and that's another one, I'm asking you to remember the $300,000, remember that $600,000 as well. That may not be an expense that we have to incur, if not, it stays in the general fund, which in turn is going to help build that fund balance. And then E-rate, we had to put in $334,000 for E-rate, and that's infrastructure, wiring, and things like that. Again, that's a flow-through, we pay for it upfront, it's a reimbursable amount, and that ended up being another almost $2 million, so 1.939. Rachel, Heather, anything y'all want to share with any of that, I kind of hit it, but I don't want to leave you guys out either. Okay? And then, so if you put those two amounts together, the gap goes back to 2.944378 between revenue and expenditure, okay? I'm going to pause there, and just, are there any questions that you guys can think of just on this one sheet, then we'll move into the rest of the packet.
When will we know about these may not incurs? When you're looking at all the million dollars that may not incur?
Mr. McNabb, that's a great question, and I don't know. The unemployment piece is connected to CARES Act and FMLA, and there's other pieces, other components, I don't know. And then USDA, we ask them almost weekly about what that process is going to look like. They have mentioned an additional stimulus package for school systems. I'm assuming that's the USDA piece, so we're watching that, but as far as the timeline, I truly do not know. And then, as I'm looking at you, it reminded me as well, keep in mind the property that we've talked about too, the proceeds from that will go in there as well, so that, we didn't even put that in there, so I just need to remember to do that, because you had mentioned that the last time. So as we're hearing the information about that, I'm happy to share that and make sure that you guys are under that group as well.
Um, briefly, up back at the balance review and expenditure, the formula 757, now that's not an actual number.
No, ma'am, it is not.
No, that was actually just what was in the budget for 2020.
Okay, so that could change a lot too.
Yes.
And that was just the, in last year's budget, the gap between revenue and expenditure, that I was trying to show that, you know, that we needed to close that gap.
Yeah, okay, I should make sure we start with it.
Okay, good question. The other thing, and I don't think Rachel could give you a copy of this, and I asked her to put this together for me, because one of the things I wanted to do was, I wanted to look at our budget without COVID. What would it look like without COVID? And so when you go back and think about this, some of those expenditure cuts to expenditures would have still been in there. I mean, you would take out the CARES Act funding, it wouldn't be there if we didn't have COVID. You would take out the transfer to school nutrition and the costs associated with school nutrition. So I asked her just to put together, what might that look like if we were working on a budget pre-COVID and COVID didn't exist? So with the $2,944,378 that we sit at right now with COVID and all the, what we just went over, we would have been at $2,85,000. So it's almost a million dollars difference in where we would have been with what we had been doing over the past year to get us closer and reduce that gap. COVID increased that basically by a million dollars. So I wanted to point that out, because your commitment was, we're going to move the millage rate back where we were, and we're going to increase that revenue stream. Our commitment was, we're going to watch everything and start reducing that gap. And I hope at the end of this, you guys will see and realize, we've seen that gap reduced quite a bit, even during a bad year, bad time financially and otherwise across the nation. I'm going to move now to the actual budget packet that you have, it's got the one pager that says FY 2021 tentative budget, and then it has all the backup documentation behind it. So that front page is always the one that we pay close attention to, because it really summarizes everything for you. And I just want to kind of walk through that a little bit. If you look at the revenue, it mirrors exactly what we just talked about. The revenue for the FY 2021 is $85,649,227. If you drop down to the middle of the page, the expenditure amount is $88,594,88,88,000. So if you just took those two amounts, the difference is that $2.944 million. That's the difference where we are in expenditure and budget. I wanted to remind, so let's follow it down, so I can kind of keep that momentum going. If we got everything we're supposed to do revenue, if we spent the entire amount, the $88 million, then it would leave our ending fund balance with everything, unassigned, all of it, at 1.568 million, ending 21, and going into FY 22. We know that's not something we can do, we can't push our fund balance that way. Again, think about what Mr. Cunner just asked, that 4.7, remember was a projection to get us started in the process. That's the same thing you're looking at here, is that projection, because we still don't have solid revenue numbers, we still don't have a lot of the solid expenditure numbers, but we're working towards it. So let me break down a little bit of what that ending fund balance would look like based on our history. So our history's always been that 3% to 5%. We've cut this budget again, just like we've done in the last year, so I don't think we're ever going to go back to a 5%, a 4%. I think really pushing it is 3%, I really did it. Because think about 3% of our budget of $88 million, 80 million of that is in employees. There's only two ways to save money there, and that's through calendar reduction, or through a RIF, or through attrition. Those are the only two manners you have, so then that leaves you about $8 million that's operational money, and that's, I mean, some of that you can't cut. So it pushes us to really consider, however, historically, we've seen a decrease in expenditures. We budget for contingencies, we budget for a higher paid employee and their benefits, and sometimes they come in as a younger inexperienced employee, so there's a savings there. So that's kind of, it's not that we pad the budget, we just have to project higher than we normally would to make sure we've got the money in there to cover it, and then in hopes that we don't have those higher expenses, or those things that happen, those emergencies that happen. I'll give you a perfect example, maybe not a perfect example, just the sanitation and disinfectant involved with COVID, that's costing us thousands and thousands. We didn't plan for that. Now CARES Act will help with that, but we didn't plan for that. Those are the kind of things we budget for. So I just want to kind of show you, and Rachel put this together for me with the total amount. So if you look on that front page, that 1.568 million, if you back up to the unassigned of the 1.2, that to me is what I always look at. I look at the 4.2 beginning, and what is that number going to be if we have to spend that money to balance our budget? That's what I look at. She's figured this on the total fund balance, so she's taken the 4, 5, 1, 4, 1, 2, 8 above, and then it comes down to the 1.568. I say that just for reference, because that's what this reflects. So if you're looking at the potential of saving 3% on your expenditures for this coming school year, so the total expenditures are 88,594, 3% would take them down to 85,936. And I can, and you guys have a bit of copy of this too.
It's this page.
Okay, perfect. It's got the budget with the belt on it very tight. And I'm just reading across the way there, so I'm all the way at the last column, 2021, with a 3% expenditure balance. You can see that the beginning fund balance was at 4.5, it only decreases to 4.2 if we have a 3% savings in our expenditure. So you're basically looking at running your budget or balancing your budget for this year on about $300,000. Keep in mind, remember that $300,000 I mentioned earlier, and the $600,000? There's another million out there that's kind of that play that can go back in and build that fund reserve up some more. So potentially, let's say it's a million, that moves that ending fund balance for next year, it goes to $5.2 billion. And again, we're just projecting out, but I want you guys to have all that information as we make these decisions. The column prior is 2%, and you can see that that would mean our ending fund balance would end up at 3.3 million. At 4.5, that's a million two that we're using to balance our budget. And then the 1% is, it leaves us at 2.4 from 4.5, so you can see what we're using to run or to balance our budget with that. And that's just based on history. I didn't figure this, I'll go back and do this, but the 2.2 billion that we had less in expenditures this year, which I think it skewed a little bit because of COVID, I want to go back and figure what that percentage was too, so you'll know. We talked about the 3, 2, and 1 last year, the 2.2, what did that end up being as far as the percentage is concerned?
It's kind of running around 2-ish, 2 and 1/2.
Okay, and we cut quite a bit last year, so that's why, Rachel, I think we're somewhere between 1 and 1/2 and 2 and 1/2 in this budget that we feel like we can save in expenditures based on that particular savings from last year. And I say savings, it's not necessarily savings, it's that we projected higher and it came in less, and so the expenditure amount came down. Does that help kind of give us a picture of potentially what happens and what that fund balance may look like as we go into next year? I was kind of hopeful that the non-COVID, even though it was a million dollars difference, I guess I was really hopeful that it would be even more than that because of the efforts we'd gone to over the past year. It is what it is at that point, and it didn't end up being what I thought it was going to be. But I just wanted you guys to have that comparison, so you can see, even without all the additional revenue that came with CARES Act, but also the reduction of 10%, if we hadn't have had all of that, we still had lowered that amount by a million dollars over the course of the past year. So just trying to make sure that you guys have as much information as we look at that. Again, I'm going to pause right there and open it up for questions that you guys may have at this point.
I mean, I think the biggest comment that I can make is, you said the projected revenue budget, it could be down to 101. I mean, if by some chance it's 91, and we cover these, this other million down here at the additional expenditures, you're looking at a potential of 2 million.
Yes, sir.
So we're only 944 at the bottom line there. So I guess we need to see what we can do about handling this meeting. Is there anything we can do to push these decisions on the transfer to school nutrition, or is it just our wait and see?
It's kind of a wait and see, because it is, I mean, it is the feds at this point, and so we continue to talk to them about, I'm glad somebody at least offered the guidance to our finance directors that said, don't pay for that now, because there's a potential that it could come from another source. Move in and do something else. It helped us with an audit, that was the first thing. The second thing was, we don't want to jeopardize the potential savings later, but it is, it's just a timing thing at this point. We're just waiting for them to say, here's what's coming, here's what you qualify for, and it may not be the whole, we put in 600,000, we say, it was 580,000 is what we ended up looking at. They may not cover the whole thing, but if they covered a portion of it, then that savings would come back into our fund balance. And then the other, the unemployment, Mr. McNabb, it blows my mind, because, and Miss Holloway probably, I'm preaching to the choir for her, of the number that we've gotten, we've appealed every one, and we've, so far we've lost every appeal, and we feel like they're not even looking at them, they're just approving, yeah, because there's so many.
And for comparison, the last couple of years, every claim that we've had that Heather has appealed, we didn't have to pay. We paid zero in the last couple of years on unemployment.
And I mean, again, when it comes to unemployment, that just goes to employment practices before you let someone go, that you went through all the appropriate steps, because the Department of Labor has specific questions that they ask. What we're dealing with now is not unique, of course, to Walker County, it's across the entire school, all the school systems. In fact, I was very frustrated one day, because I'm spending an average of three hours a day of responding to unemployment claims. I have to fax those to the Department of Labor. When I get back my letter, determination letter, they always state, you did not send signed and timely separation information. Every one of them have said that, yet I have all the documentation, I have appealed all of those. So to my list of HR directors throughout the state of Georgia, I put out, hey guys, I keep getting this, what are you seeing? And you should have seen the response back, hey, I'm getting the same thing, I thought it was just me doing something wrong. Right now I have 54 open unemployment cases, I have determinations on over half of those, I have not won any of them, I have lost every one. I have appealed all of those, I have received no information regarding these appeals. Again, that is not unique to Walker County, that is across all school systems, and my guess is not just school systems, but just in general, every business.
Just in date, I'm sure.
And Rachel pointed out that the history there has been, we've won all those appeals and haven't paid out those benefits for a number of years. We still budgeting them out, but it's based on a formula, I think it's probably 9,000?
It was about 11,000, I think, before we increased it for this 105,000.
Okay, so you can kind of see the difference, I mean, it's exponential. And so I'm hoping that at some point they say there's, it's like a flow-through, you've paid it upfront, then you'll get that money back, I just don't know, so.
The reason I bring that up is, you were saying that our 4.2 may be 5.2, actually would be 6.2, wouldn't it?
It would, because we have the potential for 2 million, not just 1. And that doesn't even include the property, potential property sales, what? Yeah, right.
That's one big challenge.
Yes, no, you're right on that. Other questions about that? What you've got behind that page is all the backup documentation. I just thought, even maybe, I know you've had this, one of the things that we talked about, and Miss Stoker asked for us to send this to you yesterday, is that that would give you a first look tonight, any questions that you have, and then as you take this with you, if there are areas that you're, as you're going through this and you see, that jumps out at me, is there a potential opportunity for savings there, or can we relook at that? Then those are the kind of things I'd like for you to share with us. That way between now and Tuesday evening, when we have our first budget hearing open to the public, you guys already have all this information, you've discussed it, we've discussed it, and what you actually viewed and the public views that night will be the true tentative budget that we will vote on at the regular board meeting. So you've got, the first page is just a revenue summary, it breaks down actual FY 20 budgeted items, and in 21 you can see the differences. It has an expenditure summary on the next page, and I, I certainly myself, if you look, last year our total salaries and benefits were 85 million on a $94 million budget, this year there's This year, there's seventy-nine point four six on an eighty-eight million dollar budget. But that's been reduced by almost seven percent. So that's, I think folks, they forget that the majority of our budget is built into people, and it just makes it difficult to look at that. And then the breakdown in all of the line items and all the backup documentation, there are some notes underneath. You know, one of the things that we reiterate is the expenditures over the past five years have increased dramatically for a couple of reasons. One, stay healthy benefits. We were looking at that going back. It used to be around a hundred and eleven dollars per employee that was a non-certificated employee, and about three hundred and thirty plus dollars for teachers or certificated employees. We pay nine eighty-five per employee per month now for every employee. That's exponential. T R S, it went from when I started here at eleven percent, it went almost to twenty-two percent. It's gone back down to nineteen oh six this year, so that's a significant amount for us. They did tell us it would stay there for three years. Rachel just told me they announced that it's going up to nineteen point eight next year. So they didn't hold to that. So, and I'm sure that has to do with what happened in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, when we lost teachers. So there were fewer people contributing, so the local dollar amount went way up, and I think that's what we'll see again. So there's notes at the bottom of those that helps maybe explain some of the things that are above. I'll just pause a minute and see if you guys, as you're looking through that, if anything jumps out quickly at you. But I definitely wanted you guys to have all of that information so that you could peruse that over the next couple of days. Feel free to call me or to call Rachel, email, whatever, and we can start continuing looking at all of those areas if there's potential for some additional reductions. Fast forward to FY twenty twenty-two, which is crazy to think about that, but revenue that continues to stay where it is, in order for those expenditures to keep going down to balance or to realistically get lower than our revenue to begin to build a healthy fund balance, we would have to continue looking at attrition. And a major concern is class sizes, and so that will be something we'll continue to monitor. It may be programs where we're not hitting those funding levels on a consistent basis, and maybe we can roll that into something else. The other thing is, we'll have to continue considering the option of calendar reduction dates because that's a, that's a major dollar amount that you can get too quickly. And I don't mean to belittle that at all because I hate the fact that that falls on the backs of all of our employees. I do, that bothers me as much as anything. But to stay financially stable and to continue to get us back to where we don't have to worry about our fund balance, we've got to make a really hard decision. So I want you to know that those we're looking at this year is for that reason, and we definitely appreciate you guys adjusting the calendar to reflect that. We may be having those same conversations next year. And I know there are many districts around us that had a healthy reserve, and they were able to handle the majority of their cuts this year. But by talking to a lot of them, they don't feel that same way next year. You know, a lot of it's out of our control, revenue and what happens with Covid going into the fall, there's just so many things that are well outside our control. You guys know that as well as I do. So, so questions or comments or things you would like to see us look at or concerns? You know, I'm just kind of opening it up for you guys to voice those. Well, I hope that's because we've given you good information, I really do, and I want you guys to continue looking at that closely. Because fresh eyes sometimes see things that we aren't seeing. And I want you guys to, and bring it up. If it's something that you might not have as much experience with or know about, we can at least guide you through that. Or it might be something that Rachel and I go, wow, we should have looked at that. So anything that you think of that potentially is a cost savings or something that will help create a healthy budget, we want you to point that out as well. And we'll continue working tirelessly. Bless your heart, Rachel's been right in the middle of a lot of things, and this has been on top of her. And keep in mind, we typically get the lot that she's months ahead, and we got it, literally, we got this last Thursday, probably, maybe Friday, because it was an error on Thursdays and Friday, and she's been working on that since. And I truly appreciate that because she's the one putting on those numbers together, and she's the one that comes into my office and I say, hey, I'd like to see this. And she has to go back and figure that for me as well, and she's done a great job with that. And I know Heather is, Ms. Holloway is same way with all the unemployment claims. She was just dubbed an audit for her background checks, so she's working on that now too. Just a lot going on right now, so. I'm happy to answer any other questions or take any concerns or if you've got ideas or thoughts. If not, unless there are other questions about things that you guys have, I'll back up to Mr..
See, may I have any questions under the budget? I know that's why we were here tonight, was just for this preliminary.
I did have one question. We received an email from Mr. Harris regarding something. I thought we had already taken care of that and agreed to do that. The grant?
Yes. Yes, grant. If it has a recommendation.
Your recommendation.
That's all.
It is, but you know what? You're right, because.
I think it already done that.
And I think it was just because there were some tweaks in that. And their purchase orders are waiting the approval so that we can get that moving because it's timely. That's a great question because we would have to, at this point, we would need to, we would have to amend our agenda and put that on there as an action item tonight. I don't know if you. Yeah, if you don't mind, if you can do that. And I'm glad you mentioned that because you're right.
I thought we had already discussed.
He did email that, yes, sir. Yeah, and we probably could have handled that through the email because you'd already seen all that, but this makes more sense to do it that way, so. And I'm not trying to, obviously, I'm trying to fill time now since she's not in the room. Reopening plans. We're meeting with the principals on Monday, and we will finalize our plan, and then the goal will be to send something out to our parents and say, here's our plan, here's all the protocols associated with it. Now, we're asking you, what does that look like for you? The things I'm trying to find out were, do you feel comfortable sending your child back on the bus? We are not going to require masks, but we're going to recommend them on the bus during transitional times in the buildings. Students can bring those on their own if they want to, same with our faculty members. So that would be a big question for us. The other one would be the comfort level of our parents of sending the students back to a full traditional five-day-a-week going back to school. You remember our survey, our first survey showed eighty-six, fourteen, that that was kind of trending. I've talked to Dade, I've talked to Catusa. Theirs is actually trending a little higher now, it's up to eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ten, eleven, that feel like they can't come back. We do have a virtual option that we're working on right now, and I think that will be something that our folks that don't feel that comfort level will be okay with entertaining that. It will look much different from what we did the last nine weeks. There will be a lot more accountability associated with it. And I think we've got a good plan. Keep in mind, the first Georgia, reviving Georgia order is slated, was slated to end the fifteenth of July, and that's why we waited until that moment before we made a real announcement. And keep in mind, this could change dramatically based on the community spread level, and we still have not gotten, we don't know about that. Great question. We had a conference call with Dr. Vociu with our recess, seventeen school systems. He said that that's still in the air, it's still in the works. We will provide you the data, and you guys will then make the decision. That's a little scary for us because we're not epidemiologists. However, if they can provide us good information, then we can make a decision based on our matrix. And so hopefully, we'll get that as we're finalizing our plan, and we'll know what does that look like as we move forward, so.
How was recess look? And physical education as far as locker room and sanitizing? I mean, is that something that is on that form as well?
It is. And what we did, Mr. Wilson, is we've got, it's just a plethora of things we're doing at elementary, middle, and high, okay? And take for instance, P E. We had our summer academy at Rossburg during the month of June. So the students would use the equipment, and then the teacher, as they transitioned out, they Clorox wiped, cleaned up everything that was there. And they kept them at, maybe not at sixty, but at least at a distance. Locker rooms really is going to depend on what kind of use. If it's an athletic team, if they have athletics, I don't want to go off that's why, but if they do, that might require that custodian to go in there, or maybe that coach to go in there and do some cleaning. The rejuvenal that we have now has been proven to kill Covid, and so we have spray bottles everywhere, and you can mist it, you don't have to wipe it up, it dissipates and it kills everything it touches. So there will be a lot of that going on throughout the buildings as well and the classrooms. Recession, you know, the survey says that the heat kills this, and that getting outside of the HVAC every fifteen minutes is a benefit. So there will be a lot of getting up, moving around, getting outside playground equipment. We're looking at that and assessing what's going to be touched constantly that we can't clean constantly. We close that off, we have other things open for them to utilize. Because they need to get out and expel that energy, but we also have to be careful while they're out there, to make sure that anything they are touching, we follow up behind them and before the next group comes out, take care of it, so. A lot of planning going into it right now. Sure, yes, sir.
What is the status of graduation?
So we are actually meeting tomorrow at one o'clock to talk about graduation, and we still, it's still scheduled for the thirtieth and thirtieth, but we're now looking at the requirements of the fifty, no more than fifty, and potentially having to do a group at seven o'clock, a group at eight o'clock, and keep them to those fifties. So we're actually having that meeting tomorrow with both high school principals. Yeah, perfect question.
Okay, I had asked Mrs. Cobb if she could get these for everyone.
Oh, sure, sure.
We don't hear those, you know, pulled up. I just want to make sure everybody is seeing what these action items are, but we do need to amend the agenda.
We do, and probably, once we get that, we'll maybe give Mr. Carruth an idea of what we're talking about because he might not, he might not know what we're talking about.
I did see, I had seen, I have not seen the actual recommendations.
Yes, sir, okay. Will, I'm sure Ms. Chairman will read those to you so you'll have that information as well. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Can we go ahead and vote to amend the agenda?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
All right, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to amend the agenda to include three action items. Number second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
I guess for, yes, I'm not too watching things there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So the first one I have up, guys, is the multi-process welders and the oxy-fuel torch systems. It is recommended that the Walker County School Board approve the purchase of six multi-process welders and ten oxy-fuel torch systems for forty-six thousand, four hundred twenty-nine dollars, forty-two cents, with a five-year warranty on each item to be placed in the new agriculture mechanics lab at Ridgeland High School to be used for classroom construction. The cost of these items will be paid for through an agriculture capital equipment grant. I have a motion to accept this recommendation.
Sure.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, the next one is the woodworking equipment. It is recommended that the Walker County School Board approve the purchase of twenty-two specific pieces of woodworking equipment for forty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars with a five-year warranty on all J E T equipment to be placed in the new agriculture mechanics lab at Ridgeland High School to be used for classroom instruction. The cost of these items will be paid for through an agriculture capital equipment grant. Do I have a motion to accept this recommendation? Motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. And the last one, it is recommended that the Walker County School Board approve the purchase of twenty-seven heavy-duty work winches with two-door metal cabinet bases from Paxton Patterson totaling thirty-seven thousand, fifty dollars to be placed in the new agriculture mechanics lab and new horticulture lab at Ridgeland High School to be used for classroom instruction. The cost of this item will be paid for through an agriculture capital equipment grant. Do I have a motion to accept this recommendation? Motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, do we have anything else that we need to discuss, guys? All right, we do not have any need for executive session, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank y'all very much.